Good morning, everyone. I'm Lisa Bender. I am the president of the Minneapolis City Council. We often have special presentations before our official meetings begin. And this morning, I'm going to turn this over to Councilmember Palmasano for a resolution welcoming the American Council for Polish Culture Convention to the city of Minneapolis.
Thank you. Terikita, did you want to join us up here? Every once in a while, we do a resolution to make sure that we are an especially welcoming city to all kinds of different cultures. My constituent, Terikita, has done a lot of work for the Polish Culture Convention, and he wanted to tell you just briefly a little bit about it.
Thank you for the resolution. On behalf of the Polish-American Cultural Institute of Minnesota, I thank you for the resolution. The American Council for Polish Culture will be held next Thursday, and it will conclude on Saturday with a visit to the Twin Cities Polish Fest, to which you're all invited. The Twin Cities Polish Fest will be held at the Minneapolis Park across from St. Anthony Mead. So again, you're all welcome to join us there.
Thank you. So just briefly, the resolution reads, "Whereas the Polish-American Culture Institute of Minnesota will host the American Council for Polish Culture Convention, August 8 through 12, the Minneapolis welcoming delegates from Polish cultural organizations throughout the United States. And whereas the American Council for Polish Culture was founded in 1948 and is a national nonprofit, the affiliated organizations of the council create a natural nationwide network of organizations committed to furthering the cause of Polish language, art, history, and cultural involvement and awareness. Minneapolis will be welcoming delegates throughout the United States who will be attending this conference. They will celebrate Polish culture and heritage, promoting various community service and Polish-American organizations. The event coincides with the Twin Cities Polish Festival and can immerse Minnesotans and all visitors in presenting unique cultural and educational displays, food, and entertainment. The theme of this conference is celebrating a tradition of independence. Poland gained its independence in November of 1918, and Poland's current president, Andrzej Duda, has declared 2018 as the year of independence and celebration of Poland's freedom. We are honored to welcome the American Council for Polish Culture of Minneapolis for their annual conference and join others around the world in commemorating the 100th anniversary of freedom in Poland." We'll officially pass this later on in our day today, but we wanted to send this with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Palmasano. Would you like to say anything else? We're good. Okay. Thank you. Everyone should come to the Polish Festival next week.
All right.
Good morning again. I'm Lisa Bender, the president of the Minneapolis City Council. I'm going to call our regular meeting of the city council of August 3 to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmember Gordon.
Here.
Conno.
Here.
Reich is absent. Fletcher.
Here.
Jenkins.
Here.
Schrader.
Here.
Worsami is absent. Cunningham is absent. Ellison.
Here.
Goodman.
Present.
Johnson.
Here.
Palmasano.
Present.
President Bender.
Here.
There are 10 members present.
We do have a quorum. I'd like to note that Councilmember Reich is absent because he is attending to family business this week. And so with that, we'll proceed to the meeting agenda. And I actually believe that Councilmember Cunningham is on his way, and now we've been joined by Councilmember Worsami. We have, for our agenda, we have a request for a closed session to discuss the legal matter of Justine Ruszek versus Noor Atal, which we will add to the agenda under adjournment. We also have a new item of business which should be distributed at your desk, which is for the formal approval of a letter signed by Mayor Frye and me on behalf of the city which expresses our opposition to a citizen question being included, citizenship question being included, in the 2020 census. We will have more information from staff about that item under the Order of New Business. Are there any other amendments to the agenda? Seeing none, I'll recognize the vice president for a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. That carries, and the agenda is adopted. Next, we have the minutes of the regular meeting of July 20 for acceptance. I'll recognize the vice president for a motion to accept those minutes.
So moved.
All in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That carries. The minutes are adopted. Finally, we have the referral petitions, communications, and reports to proper committees. Is there a motion for those referrals?
So moved.
Second.
All in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that carries, and those matters have been referred to the proper committees. At this time, we'll take up the reports of the standing committees, beginning with the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee chaired by Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. The Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee is bringing forward 21 items for our approval this morning. Items number 1, 2, and 3 are items dealing with liquor licenses and expansion of premise. Item 4 is an increase in the rental licensing fee schedule for 2019. Item 5 and 6 are both PACE, Property-Assessed Clean Energy Program investments. Item 7 are liquor license approvals, and 8 are liquor license renewals. 9 are business license approvals, and 10 are business license renewals. 11 is gambling license approvals, and 12 is gambling license renewals. Item number 13, and 14, and 15 are all business license operating conditions. Item 16 is a rental license reinstatement, and 17 is removal of branches and weeds, low bid. Item 18 is a Pathways to Prosperity grant, as is item number 19. Item number 20 are applications for funding for the August round of the DEED Redevelopment Grant Program. And item 21 are the Brownfield Grant Funding Housing Projects. This is the recommendation of staff to proceed with the fall round. With that, I'm going to move all items except for item 20, which I will hold back for an amendment.
Councilmember Goodman has moved the majority of the EDRS agenda. Is there any discussion on those items that haven't moved? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That carries, and those items are adopted. Councilmember Goodman?
On item number 20, Madam President, this is a fairly significant change to the way that we have been approaching applications for funding in the redevelopment grant program. Essentially, up until now, any project that was submitted to the city that the city generally supported was put on the list of projects to go forward to the grant funders. This change would state that commercial projects should still move forward, but any housing project that moves forward must include affordable housing in order for us to consider putting it on our list. There was extensive conversation in committee over multiple committee meetings about moving in this direction, and others might perhaps want to speak further about it. I think the general consensus of the committee, and it was passed unanimously, was we need to put our values in front of these grants as well. And should we not receive funding for projects in the city of Minneapolis, that would be okay if they were projects that did not include affordable housing. We are making this change for this current round, and perhaps we'll see what happens going forward. One of the things we did consider, however, was new market rate housing in areas of impacted poverty. And we really did not want to put ourselves in a position of turning down projects where there was market building in areas of concentrated poverty. So the amendment in front of you creates a waiver to the policy that would allow a new market rate housing project in an area where none has occurred in three years prior to submit a Brownfield Grant application, and then also to address the fact that the combined land value would be less than the environmental cleanup costs. These will also be subject to staff and council approval. So they won't be a straight-up waiver, but we would hear about those projects, have the opportunity to weigh in as to whether or not those projects are supported by the council member as well as the community, and if so, move them forward on our list. So I am moving item number 20, which is the major change with regard to affordable housing requirement being included, along with the amendment, which would allow a waiver for market rate housing projects in areas where none has occurred within the past three years.
Wonderful. Councilmember Goodman has moved the item with the amendment. Councilmember Jenkins?
Yeah, I want to speak in support of this proposal, but also ask, and it seems like there has been a lot of consideration around what could be the racial equity impact of significant policy shift like this. But I would like to see us run that through our race equity analysis so that we can fully understand what the impacts are on impacted communities.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion or comment? Councilmember Fletcher?
Thank you, President Bender. I think this is a really important move for us to make, particularly because I just think we're in a moment of really trying to send a signal from this council as often and as much as we can that affordable housing is our priority, and it's something that we want to see, and it's something that we're looking to developers and to anybody who's developing an imagination about what we could do with a piece of land in the city, that we want to encourage everybody to understand that we are strong collaborators with you when affordable housing is on the table, and this is another way of sending that signal. I think the two amendments that are added here, the amendment was really designed with that race equity lens in mind, with the idea that there may be areas where we didn't want this to have the effect of turning down money for market rate housing in places where it's been hard to prompt development, where land values have not gone up to a point to make it worth developing on a balance sheet. And so the ways that we can try to bring this money in, I think, makes a certain amount of sense. So I'm very supportive of this. I appreciate Councilmember Goodman getting this language modified to reflect the really good conversation we had in committee, and I'm excited to support this.
Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Madam President. I think because everyone wasn't part of the conversation, I maybe should explain kind of what's happening and what we were trying to address. So when projects in the city of Minneapolis happen, whether they touch us or not, meaning we finance or fund them, they come to us to be put on a list as kind of a tacit approval from the city to go to other funders for funding. So an example would be, there could be a very high-end market rate project in my ward that did not have any public assistance, that did not get any public subsidy, that is now replying for $1 million of public subsidy for pollution remediation or some other sort of environmental cleanup. And so that, in my mind, kicks in public subsidy. And therefore, I believe that these projects should have affordable housing to some extent included in them. What often happens is landowners who have pollution or asbestos don't deduct the cost of the pollution from the sale price because they make the assumption the government will help pay to clean it up. So if the property was worth $3 million clean and $2 million dirty, they sell it for $3 million, assuming that the DEED, the Met Council, or the state will step in with the Brownfields grant. So the polluter actually gets rewarded because they sell the property at top dollar, and then they turn around and apply for public funding for the pollution remediation. So there are kind of a couple of things at play here, and I just have seen over a long period of time that many market rate projects, which are great projects and we want to see happening in the city, they thumb their nose at us on affordable housing, and they don't ask for public assistance, but then they ask for public assistance after the fact. And I think that there's a consensus on the committee that that does not make a lot of sense. The counterbalance argument to this is you're leaving money on the table that the state would spend in the city of Minneapolis. Why say no? Even if it doesn't meet your values, why say no? It's possible the project wouldn't happen but for that grant. And I think that there's a consensus on the committee that, for now, we should stand up for our values on these projects, and hopefully it will encourage developers to more seriously consider adding some level of affordable housing in order to get a $1 million cleanup grant, and/or it might suggest to property owners that have polluted land they should deduct the negative value of the pollution when making a sale, making it less expensive to build a project, and potentially easier to put in affordable housing. So hopefully, that kind of clarifies even Councilmember Jenkins' question, because what we're saying is we're not going to allow public money to go into very high-end projects unless our goals are met.
Thank you. Councilmember Schrader?
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to briefly follow up on that point. I think that's a very good breakdown of what this bill does, and I commend the author for the work on that. And I think it's worth pointing out that what we're doing is really saying that these are important values, that they're made, that risk of leaving money on the table is the hard choice we have to make every day, and where we're making it here in hopes that communities around us make the same choice, that we shouldn't have to choose between cleaning and doing the right thing on the environment and doing the right thing by our citizens and looking out for affordable housing.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next, we have the report of the Housing Policy and Development Committee, given by the chair, Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, President Bender. The Housing Policy and Development Committee is bringing forward 15 items for approval today. The first six items are land sale for residential property, and then the seventh and eighth item are side yard. This is a land sale at 5960 Clinton Avenue South. Second item is a land sale at 3718 Fremont Avenue North. Third item is a sale at 2916 Fourteenth Avenue North. Fourth is land sale at 3210 Upton Avenue North. The fifth is a land sale at 41522nd Avenue North. And the sixth item is a land sale at 756 Jackson Street Northeast, and this is all for low-density housing. The seventh item is a side yard, portion of a side yard sale at 51420th Avenue South. And the eighth item is a side yard sale at 26228th Street South. The ninth item is an Affordable Housing Trust Fund loan and new ground lease for Riverside Homes. This is a large project in the Cedar Riverside area. It includes an appropriation of up to $5,272,000 in loan repayments, and also authorizing approval of a new block grant-funded Affordable Housing Trust Fund loan in an amount of almost the same, $5,112,000 to Riverside Homes. This will help us preserve lots of affordable housing in the area. And we will be extending a lease. So in this situation, the city actually owns the property under these homes, and we're going to be authorizing a new 75-year ground lease back to the Riverside Homes Minneapolis Limited Partnership to preserve affordable housing. The 11th item is providing some analysis and authorization for the West Broadway Curve West Building Affordable Housing Project on West Broadway. Tenth item is extending exclusive development rights for Pinnacle Management LLC. This is for 24 months on three city-owned parcels at 1830 and 1832 Bryant Avenue North and 817 and 1/2 West Broadway Avenue. Thirteenth item is a resolution approving Hennepin County Housing Redevelopment Authority financial assistance on several projects, including Minnehaha Commons, Minnehaha Town Homes, Park 7, Paris Development, 410 Lake Street, Maya Commons, project at 2015 and 2109 Cedar Avenue, the Penn Avenue Union Project, and Sathany Senior Housing. Fourteenth item is authorizing a one-year basic service agreement. This is a contract with Minnesota Legal Aid to provide legal representation to low-income Minneapolis tenants. This has to do with tenant remedies, and so we'll be providing some assistance so that they can have help when they're going to court to remedy action having to do with landlords who need to make repairs on the rental properties. And the fifteenth item is an emergency stabilization pilot program guidelines and funding. This is an innovative approach that will allow the city to provide housing in emergency situations. And I believe that the fifteenth item has an amendment from Councilmember Ellison. So what I want to do first is move items 1 through 14.
Councilmember Gordon has moved items 1 through 14. We can come back to item 15 after a vote, or perhaps maybe we'll just take it up now and recognize Councilmember Ellison for his amendment on item 15. Let's just do that.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. So I wanted to amend item 15 to both approve the guidelines, but then also to approve the following staff directive, directing staff to research options to establish an escrow for emergency stabilization pilot program tenants that would be utilized as future down payment assistance for home purchase or used to offset rental increases for implementation in the second year of the program or sooner. Just to explain a little bit about the program, this is really a response to, I think, some of the, I don't want to call it nefarious, I guess, landlord activity that we've seen from cases like Stephen Friends, or Mahnu Khan, or Don Kleberg, where the city is intervening in cracking down on these landlords because of their poor practices, but by doing so, by condemning a property, which we should do, or by revoking a license revocation, which we should do, we're also displacing people. And so this program looks to intervene on that. But also as a feature of this program, we really want to set people up to succeed financially and get folks, if they opt in, on a path towards wealth building. And so there was a lot of discussion at committee, and Councilmember Goodman, and I believe Schrader, and a couple others had the great idea to establish this escrow account, especially since the tenants who were looking to a place have proven that they can pay a decent amount in rent. And so this will set them up for success when it comes to maybe purchasing a home or whatever. So yeah, we'd like to move that.
Thank you, Councilmember Ellison. Councilmember Ellison has moved item 15. Councilmember Schrader?
I just want to speak in support. I think this is a great idea, and I also want to give credit to, Councilmember Goodman is the one that had this idea. I fully support it, and I will be voting in support.
I put myself in queue just to comment briefly that, you know, I think, I appreciate this very much, and I think this is the right thing to do, given the situation we find ourselves in. But I know many of us feel that we should make some changes so that this doesn't happen again, and we are not finding ourselves in a situation where renters in our city are in such terrible living conditions that we have to do a license revocation for a large number of rental units, whether they be single-family homes in the north side or multifamily buildings throughout the city. So I'm excited about the work that many council members are starting to lead in this space, and together with our Housing Division and Regulatory Services, I think there's room for improvement and a lot of energy behind this topic. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, is it, I think we'd like to call the roll on the whole HPD agenda, including Councilmember Ellison's motion on item 15.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next, we have the report from the Intergovernmental Relations Committee, presented by the chair, Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We bring forward, the Intergovernmental Relations Committee brings forward three items. The first is a Liquor Area and Spacing Restriction Charter Amendment. The second and the third items are related to the Police Department Charter Amendment. And I want to note that that was a result of a special joint committee. Item number 2 was brought, was moved forward with recommendation by Intergovernmental Relations, but was moved forward without recommendation by the Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee. Item number 3 was moved forward with recommendation by both committees. I believe there's going to be an amendment to item number 2, and I'm sure some discussion. So I'd like to move forward at this time items 1 and 3 for approval, and then return to item 2 for amendment and discussion.
Councilmember Johnson has moved items 1 and 3 from the Intergovernmental Relations Committee agenda. Is there any discussion on those items?
Madam President, the clerk is confused. There are only two items being brought forward at a high level by the IGR Committee. The first one is noted as the Police Department Charter Amendment. It has two subsequent actions under that. There is the second item, which deals with the liquor area spacing restrictions. So my suggestion to you, Madam President of the council, is if there is a desire to separate out the first discussion on the police charter amendment proposal, that we go ahead and proceed on the vote with item number 2 having to do with the Liquor Area and Spacing Restrictions Charter Amendment, which is simply adopting ballot language, and then return to the other item, which has to do with both the ordinance and the staff directive on the charter amendment regarding police oversight.
Perfect.
Madam Chair, can I just point out the reason why I read them as three items, is we get these included in our booklet by the clerk's office, so this listed them out individually as three items. So I want to explain that for any confusion of where that came from.
Perfect. Okay. So going by the numbering in our printed agenda, we are, we will call the roll on item number 2. I'll just see if there's any discussion on that item. You're in queue for item 1. Yeah, okay, perfect. Seeing no discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Clerk, can you please clarify which item we're voting on right now?
We're voting on Liquor Area Spacing Restrictions Charter Amendment, which is approving ballot language to be submitted to the voters in November.
Thank you so much. Yes.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and that item is adopted. That returns us to item number 1. I'll recognize Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item number 1, we've got two pieces for, as I mentioned. We've got both the reports by the two committees, one with recommendation and one without, for moving forward charter amendment language and transmitting it to the Charter Commission. And then we also have a staff direction, which both committees have recommended approval of. And I know that there is an amendment to this item, so I'd like to suggest we recognize Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you. Councilmember Fletcher?
Thank you, President Bender. So I wanted to give a little bit of background on this. I've been kind of very clear about my intent with this language, which is both to preserve the executive authority of the mayor and to take what I think is the opportunity to create a little bit of transparency by moving policy decision-making to this body, where we do this under the harsh glare of local cable access, and everybody has access to our work. So I got a call from the mayor yesterday following our meeting on Wednesday, and he raised some concerns about the effect of the language that we had passed on Wednesday. And I don't want to mislead anybody. The mayor does not agree with me about my intent, right? We were publicly sort of, you know, on record as disagreeing about what this is. But we've maintained a constructive relationship throughout this and discussing that, and he indicated to me that he had some concerns that relying on his training as a lawyer, which I don't have the benefit of, that we were relying on the phrase "executive authority" to do too much work in that clause, and that we were, he was worried that in effect we were taking away more of his power than I intended to. And so I looked at that and worked with the city attorney yesterday, and I appreciate her fast work to revise the language and to find what I think is a more elegant way to achieve the intent, and a much clearer way to achieve the intent. And so the new language would read, "The mayor has executive power over the establishment, maintenance, and command of the police department. The mayor may make rules and regulations, and may promulgate and enforce general and special orders necessary to operating the police department. Except where the law vets an appointment in the department itself, the mayor appoints and may discipline or discharge any employee in the department, subject to the Civil Services Commission's rules in the case of an employee in the classified service. Notwithstanding the foregoing, the city council may make rules and regulations of the police department, subject to the mayor's signature or veto as provided in Section 4.4(c). I offer that as an amendment to the proposed charter amendment."
Councilmember Fletcher has moved an amendment. Councilmember Gordon?
Thank you, President Bender. Well, I'll confess that when I first saw this, I was, had some concerns about it. I appreciated the amendment that came out of committee. It seemed to clearly articulate that the city council would still have policymaking authority, which is something that I felt was very important, that we're able to set policy, and we have the flexibility so that we can vote to make staff directions, we We could look at the police policies and we could impact something if we wanted to somehow change the body camera policy or the TASER policy or maybe the training policy and program and what would happen. And so I was concerned about this, but I also understand and it's my understanding that the idea of making policy actually isn't in the paragraph and doesn't, the word "policy" doesn't appear very much in the charter at all. And the way the charter talks about making policy is through making rules and regulations. So it's my understanding that policy is subsumed in the existing wording and it's still there. So I see that the intent behind this and the impact that it will have will still accomplish the goals that I wanted to accomplish. Maybe not as elegantly as I thought would, but just deleting the whole section and putting it on par with the fire department, but maybe more elegantly in different ways and it's clarifying things and so I appreciate that. Actually read this this morning and it occurred to me that this could be the exact approach to potentially gain us the support of the mayor and maybe the support of the full council. We've now clarified that the mayor is going to have a very special role to play with the Police Department, going to maintain executive power over the establishment and maintenance and command of the Police Department. I think that's significant and the mayor can actually make rules and regulations and may enforce general and special orders necessary to operating the Police Department. Clearly, he's got a big role to play in policy as well and there's lots of work that he can do probably outside of the council unless we decide to weigh in things. Things can be operating very much as they are now if we wanted to do that. But then there's also clearly a role for us to play. If we think something is so critically important that it's not enough for it to be Police Department policy, it should be city policy. It gets to be set here and go through our process, open agendas and meetings and notifications and community meetings and those kinds of things. We'll still be able to do that. So I actually think this is something that we could see Councilmember Fletcher and the mayor standing in front of some cameras about and celebrating after today if this passes because I think this could be significant and I hope that it will pass and I hope that people will see this as a win-win-win for all of us. And I want to thank Councilmember Fletcher for picking it up, for engaging so thoroughly and for his leadership in getting us to this point.
Council Vice President Jenkins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I do want to commend Councilmember Fletcher for his work on this and the mayor for weighing in, as well as Councilmember Gordon for bringing this really important conversation to the forefront. You know, I want to, I want to remind us of our commitment to race equity that we have made as a council. And a part of that process is that every policy, every budget decision that we intend to move, we should have an understanding of the impact, who it's going to affect, what has been the community engagement, what is the plan for implementation, what are the desired goals? And I'm just still not sure that I understand all of those aspects of a race equity analysis. And I'm reminding us of this because we're going to be asking all of our department heads to do this very same work. And what message are we sending when we don't do that level of analysis on the policies that we make? And so I think this is a great compromise and I understand that that is what policymaking is about, but are we going to hold ourselves to the standards that we are holding up for all of our other departments? Thank you.
Thank you. I have myself in queue. I'll just see if anyone else wants to speak though before I do. I wanted to speak in support of Councilmember Fletcher's amendment and I did want to note that it's very common for us to discuss policy change and make changes as we learn more and hear from each other. And this is a compromise from what Councilmember Gordon first brought forward, which was putting the Police Department on equal footing as all of our other departments. Well, this change, this amendment maintains special power and authority for the mayor that is unique to the Police Department compared to most of our other city departments. And I've been supportive of this approach because I think it does achieve what we intended, most of us, I think that I am most prioritizing, which is our ability to make the kinds of rules that Councilmember Gordon described earlier, the ones about use of force, about training, about the ways in which we're putting our officers out into the community, which it seems at least unclear from what we've heard from our city attorneys so far that we have this authority today. And so I think that it is, again, worth sending the question to the voters to clarify that we could have this kind of influence over the department's rules and regulations. Now I seek Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Council President Bender. I read in the paper this morning that the Charter Commission is not intending on taking this up under the very tight timeline that has been proposed by the authors. I received an email from Mr. Casey Carl during the public hearing that stated that the Charter Commission determined at 5:05 on Wednesday that they were not going to take this up. I left the meeting because of the incredibly disrespectful way that people who were speaking were treated by each other in the meeting and could not, in good conscience, watch people screaming at each other and screaming at those who are testifying and berating them and making it impossible for them to make their voices heard. We all acknowledge that this is not going to be moving forward to the voters this year. So I ask you, what is the rush to pass this today? I watched the rest of this hearing on television at home, so I had the opportunity to hear the conversation brought up by Councilmember Conno with regard to the fact that many people on the City Council don't understand their current roles with regard to police oversight. The staff direction is further evidence that many people on the council are not sure of what their role is. So I ask why we are moving this forward today when there's still confusion about what the role of the council is currently, when we know that the Charter Commission is not likely to bring this to the voters? It feels like making a point, not like making a difference. It feels political, not policy-oriented, and it has served to divide us rather than unite us. That is not why I ran for election and I am very sorry it's come to this point because I think there are, there is a lot of common ground and mutual understanding amongst us that things have to change. This is not the way to do it.
Councilmember Conno?
Thank you, Madam President. So I have some comments to make and then a point of information question. So I appreciate the work that Councilmember Fletcher has done to work towards clarifying the structure that is being intended to, to be implemented in the future. And I appreciate, you know, the email from last night saying, you know, things are changing and we're bringing this forward. So I do appreciate that and I just wanted to say that for me, I'm planning to speak on this a little bit more because it's going to come up before the Public Safety Committee, I'm assuming, or maybe this is the time to debate all of it. But as the Chair of Public Safety, while I support the amendment, I'm not going to be able to support moving this forward to the charter because I believe that my responsibility as the Chair of that committee who helps to oversee police community relations through the entire city, I have the responsibility to work with four groups of constituencies around that. Number one, our Chief of Police. Number two, our mayor. Number three, our council colleagues. And number four, our community. And I cannot in confidence say that that process involved all of those people. I know some council members were working together, others were perhaps not invited to be a part of that process as much. And then I think there's even like a tertiary level of folks who just weren't talked to at all about, about what we're discussing today. So I believe that our role as the City Council is to decide whether or not something is ready for primetime, whether or not something has gone through the right process, the right, I guess, set of meetings and conversations and engagement opportunities for people to shape it, to ask questions. And I believe that the public hearing we had on Wednesday was the tip of the iceberg in terms of the kinds of input people wanted to have before moving this forward to the Charter Commission. So I cannot in full confidence and in full responsibility bring this forward to the charter because I know some folks are like, "Well, you know, just let the charter kill it, it's fine." And that's not okay with me. I can't do legislation that way. I have a responsibility to make sure that the work we have here before us is well packaged, well understood, well communicated, that we've had all of the players who are going to be impacted by this engaged, even if we may disagree at the end of the day. And that's why for me, it was such a missed opportunity to engage me and be a partner in this work because of the way that this was put together. And I feel like we can learn a lot from this. And I will say that as we were having the public hearing on Wednesday, it just struck me again what careful approach we have to have when we do these kinds of things in the community around this topic because you saw how much hurt and pain and frustration and trauma and the lack of information people had about what we were doing. And so I felt a little irresponsible bringing that forward to them on Wednesday and I wish I could have had more clarity to provide to my community around this. And I haven't been given those tools, I haven't been presented with those plans. I've done my best to try to bring that clarity forward and that's what that staff direction was about. I do believe that such a significant change requires more time, more conversations. And so that's why I can't really support it, although I'm in favor of, of course, police reform and improving police community relations. And just last night, I reached out to the mayor and the chief and the Vice Chair of Public Safety to discuss this issue that's now bubbling up about whether or not officers can wear the uniforms and use city resources to do political endorsements because that came out, you know, in the media or, you know, at least on Twitter last night. So we're working on a lot of different things and I'm thoroughly committed to police reform and I'm also thoroughly committed to working with everyone that needs to be a part of that. So I just wanted, point of information is, I would like to vote for the amended language, but I will not, I don't want to vote for the other things moving up forward. So I just want to make sure that we're clear on what that action is before we all take a vote today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Conno. I can recognize the clerk to answer those questions.
Madam President, just so the council is clear, the items were all bundled together out of the joint meeting of the information, of the Intergovernmental Relations and the Public Safety Emergency Management Committee. This is the only time it's on the agenda to be discussed. There will not be a separate discussion of public safety. So those reports were submitted together through the Intergovernmental Relations Committee because it has primary jurisdiction over charter amendment pieces. So this is the time to have any discussion, any amendments and any actions taken on the proposed amendment related to charter on police oversight.
Thank you. Perfect. Councilmember Ellison? I want to, I'll note we've been joined by Mayor Fry. Thank you for joining us today.
I just wanted to name that I think that there's been, I've heard a lot of statements that I would summarize as council members don't know what their current responsibilities are, but that's not actually the truth. The truth is, is that there's genuine gray area and that's been stated by our council, right? By our legal counsel, that there's gray area. And so I don't want the public to be confused by the statement that, "Oh, council members don't know what their current responsibilities are." Councilmembers have been, for a long time, longer than I've got here, tried to understand what the responsibilities are and the truth is that they're unclear, is that there's gray area. We've been told that. I think that we're looking to clarify that. I think that this amendment does that and I want to thank Councilmember Fletcher for bringing this forward and I think, I think that this is an effort to provide that clarity. And so I think that that's, I just wanted to make that clear because I think that that's been said a lot. Councilmembers don't know. But the truth is, is that the language is unclear. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fletcher?
Thank you, President Bender, and thanks, everybody, for engaging with this. I really appreciate this conversation that's happening. And I just want to say in terms of the, in terms of the why now, I don't think this is going to be on the 2018 ballot and I, I'm not particularly pushing for that. But I think that where we are is there's a long process to do a charter amendment and this is one step in the process. And what's happening here today is that the decision that we have in front of us is, do we have intent that a majority of us want to move forward for further conversation? And then does, do we have language that we're comfortable with that expresses that intent? And for me, my answer is yes. I think I've clarified what my intent is and what I think I'm trying to do. And I think we have a language that expresses that intent that I feel comfortable with, having worked with the city attorney on it and moved it forward to you. And that I think if we're saying yes to both of those questions, then the only reason not to take this step today would be politics. And so for me, I think the questions that are in front of us are clear and for me, I feel comfortable voting yes.
Thank you. I have myself in queue and I just wanted to mention kind of a theme that I have also observed emerging, which is to question Councilmember Gordon's intent in bringing forward a change, which as a council member is literally our job. It is literally our job to introduce policy changes, ordinances, to see things we want to fix and propose ideas that are intended to fix them. And Councilmember Gordon did not have a press conference with a bunch of council members standing beside him. He proposed an idea through our normal legislative process and that's why we are debating it here today. So I think the intent of this change is what Councilmember Gordon has described over and over and over, which is to give the City Council clear, a clear ability to create rules and regulations for our Police Department. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. So I won't speak in large form anyway to the substance of this particular charter amendment. I think everyone is quite aware of my position. There's a couple things, though, that I feel that need to be pointed out for the purpose of good governance going forward. The first is presently there is the notion, certainly among several who have supported or supporting this, that when it is presently unclear whether we have the power today, so it's worth sending the question to the voters to clarify. That's almost an exact quote and it's something that I adamantly disagree with. If we can't promise to the voters baseline information on the issue, how in good conscience can we ask them to make a decision on it? When we can't promise baseline information about what they're voting on and the impacts of it, how can we expect them to make an informed decision on it? Clearly, there's confusion. Clearly, there's a lack of understanding both about the present law as well as the implications of this, of this charter amendment if passed. I have confusions as well. I'm not saying it's limited to the council. There was a staff direction just a couple of days ago that was issued, asking the city attorney to clarify exactly what the present powers are, and I fully support that. I think we all have some questions. My argument is let's get those questions answered and then we can move forward. Let's do this responsibly. Let's do this thoughtfully and let's make sure that the voters have all of the information ultimately before they're voting on this. It was mentioned just earlier, in fact, there's a Star Tribune article this morning noting that it is highly unlikely that the Charter Commission will be moving forward with it this year. Noting that it is highly unlikely that the Charter Commission will be moving forward to a vote in November and it's very clear that we all have a lack of understanding of the law as well as the amendment. Why is it necessary to push this forward right now, today? The Charter Commission will have to review the language that is submitted to them. Let's make sure we're review, they're reviewing the language, the final language that we want them to review. Obviously, there are amendments that are being made on the dais today and I am appreciative of Councilmember Fletcher working with me. I, just to be clear... Just to be clear, I am still adamantly opposed to this amendment, and the chief of police is still adamantly opposed. He has made it exceedingly clear that this would make his job far more difficult. I respect that, and I respect all of you. I want to work with you going forward. I want to coordinate and collaborate on policy, on rules, on regulations, and on ordinances. There have not yet been significant issues that have been brought to my attention that you would like to collaborate on so that we can work together, but going forward, I hope that there are some.
Thank you. Councilmember Connaught.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to move to separate the questions so that we can vote on item number one, the transmittal question, and then item number two, the staff direction separately. And I'd be happy to do that now or after folks on the queue are finished making their public statements.
Thank you. And to clarify, we are still discussing Councilmember Fletcher's amendment to the language. So I think it will be, I think I'll recognize you when we're back to the underlying.
Some, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, we just sat through a two-hour training discussion presentation on race equity this past Wednesday. And again, I want to just remind us of what a racial equity tool analysis considers. When should we use a race equity tool? The earlier you use a race equity tool, the better. When race equity is left off the table and not addressed until the last minute, the use of a race equity tool is less likely to be fruitful. Using a racial equity tool means that individual decisions can be aligned with organizational and racial equity goals and desired outcomes. Using a race equity tool more than once means that equity is incorporated throughout all phases, from development to implementation and evaluation. So what is a race equity tool? It's a simple set of questions. One, proposal. What is the policy, program, practice, or budget decision under consideration? What are the desired results and outcomes? Two, data. What is the data? What does the data tell us? Three, community engagement. How have communities been engaged? Are there opportunities to expand engagement? Four, analysis and strategies. Who will benefit from or be burdened by your proposal? What are your strategies for advancing racial equity or mitigating unintended consequences? Five, implementation. What is your plan for implementation? Six, accountability and communication. How will you ensure accountability, communicate, and evaluate results? I'm going to leave it to you, as my colleagues, to answer those questions for yourself. Myself, I do not believe that we have addressed these items at all. Thank you.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, first, I just want to start off with saying that every single decision that I make is through a racial equity analysis. And at its core, equity is inherently the diffusion of power. And looking at building power in different ways, a race equity analysis will tell you that a concentration of power is antithetical to equity. At the meeting, our joint meeting, I asked a very specific question around policy with domestic violence, domestic violence reporting and MPD. And what I got was an unclear answer around, it's a gray area, it depends. What we have here really clarifies that. And I guess that one of the challenges that I have is really being able to see where the confusion is. This is pretty straightforward, the language, in my opinion. If we look at it, complete becomes executive, and then it just adds the addition for us to be able to make rules and regulations with the mayor still being able to veto it or sign it. I feel like that's pretty straightforward. Have we checked all of the list on the racial equity tool that was recommended? No. And I think that that's a part of the process moving forward, and something that I have been clear about that I want to be happening. I think that stopping the conversation right now is not inherently helpful, and think that it's important for us to continue this conversation. I do not think it's going to be on the ballot this year. I think that's been made pretty clear, but stopping the conversation right now is not productive. And again, this is pretty straightforward, so the language and to say that it's so confusing, I think that with a little bit of further analysis, that we'll be able to maybe get some more clarification, but stopping the conversation now does not get us to that end. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to note that the mayor said that no council members had worked with him or reached out about proposals. I know I have on a couple of changes that I'd like to see related to policing, and I want to commend the mayor's office for being responsive, having an open door and listening. But I did want to state that, just so nobody's under the impression that there are not council members that have had discussions with the mayor's office about changes and have brought forward ideas and proposals. I'm guessing I'm not the only one on that, and I just wanted to make that publicly known.
Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, President Bender. I thought maybe I could respond to some of the things that have come up. I think I certainly appreciate the discussion, and I appreciate the conversation. It's good to hear from all my colleagues at it. And actually, I think we do our best business when we do our business out here in public, and there hasn't been some group meetings behind the scenes of us out there, you know, planning that. And actually, I think it's helpful for the people when we do our conversations and do our discussions out here. So I've been trying to follow an open, transparent process with this as well, and brought it forward. I do think there's some confusion, but I think the confusion is caused by defective charter. The charter has conflicting language in it. I actually think what we're doing now is we're straightening up some of that confusion. And I've asked the question many times since I've been on the council, and I've gotten answers from the attorney. And so, different attorneys, actually, about it. And clearly, this part of the charter makes it difficult and confusing, and the hands are tied of the council. And so that's obvious. And so I think this process improvement is really necessary. I also totally and completely respect the charter commission. I'm not going to try to predict what's going to happen now. I know that we have a commitment from them that they're actually going to be meeting in time to look at this issue. And of course, they've got the prerogative to hold on to it for 60 days if they want to, and they've also got the prerogative to suspend their rules or to take some other kind of action, and we don't know what they're going to do. What we can do is what we think is best. And I think that there actually is plenty of time for people to consider this, for us to hold and engage in community meetings. Once this is the will of the council, then we're in a position to direct staff to do that if we want to, so that people can understand this further. And I actually think it's going to be pretty clear to the voters what this is, once you read the language. I appreciate what Councilmember Cunningham said. It lays out pretty much exactly what's happened in the language, and I know that the charter commissioners are going to be able to understand what that is. Of course, there's questions about what happens and how it gets interpreted, and how legislation is made based on it, and how policies get made, so that's going to happen no matter what. It certainly happens under the existing charter. I also appreciate what an important conversation it is for us to have. And I know that the public hearing that we had was painful for some people to watch, to be in, but I think what's more painful is what communities have been going through. And I have to say that the pain didn't happen at that meeting. What we saw was a piece of it, and which tells me our work is barely beginning. And we probably have a long way to go with that. And I think the way you actually get through some of this trauma and injury is to try to look at it and to try to let people share what they've gone through, to try to face our horrible past, try to look at the racial inequity that we've seen in our city, in our government, in the way that the police have operated in the past, and try to work together and get out of that. And I think we have actually, just in this concept alone, got some people to come forward and think, well, maybe there is a pathway, and maybe there is some hope, and maybe I'm going to let my emotions go, and I can go actually communicate with my city about this and make some progress. And I certainly hope that we hold on to that and we use this as an opportunity to deal with that more. I have to say that actually, I love the idea about using a racial equity toolkit, having a filter, a lens, and a frame around every decision. And partly, I see this action here, if we do this, if we open up supervision of the police to include the council, and we have a significant role to play, that means we're going to be opening the doors so that people can come in and work through us. That also means that we will have a capacity to provide more direction and more guidance to the policies and decisions of the police department, so that we can actually institute permanently a racial equity lens in the policy decisions that get made. So I look forward to that. I'm sorry that the mayor has gone now. I will note, this is a significant issue. This is a significant issue that I'm bringing forward to the mayor and to everybody. And I think this is a significant issue of saying, let's set up a process in a way so that we can actually really work together in meaningful ways. Just because you share power doesn't mean anybody has to lose power. And what this is about is doing things together and sharing the power so that we can make this a better city for everybody.
Thank you. I don't see any more councilmembers in line to speak. Would anyone else like to speak on Councilmember Fletcher's amendment? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll and just clarify that this vote is to amend the language. Then I will recognize Councilmember Connaught's motion to separate the two items, so we will be then voting first on the new charter amendment, and then whether or not to forward it to the charter commission. And then the second, well, actually, the third vote then, will be on the staff direction. So, clerk, please call the roll on Councilmember Fletcher's amendment.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Connaught.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
No.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
No.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
No.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are nine ayes and three nays.
That motion carries. The underlying charter amendment language has been amended. So that brings us back to the question of transmitting the charter commission proposed, this proposed amendment via an ordinance that would be submitted to the voters. And this says in the November 6, 2018, general election. And this will go to the charter commission at their special meeting next week. Is there any discussion on the motion? I don't see any. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Connaught.
No.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
No.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
No.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
No.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
No.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are seven ayes and five nays.
That carries, and the motion is adopted. This will go to the charter commission for their special meeting next week. Then finally, we have the staff direction. I'll just go ahead and move the staff direction and see if there's any discussion on the staff direction to the city attorney to provide a legal analysis of the existing provisions of the city charter. Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Gordon.
Aye.
Connaught.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and that is adopted. That completes the intergovernmental relations committee's report. And that brings us next to the report from the Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights and Engagement Committee, presented by the chair, Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, President Bender. The Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights and Engagement Committee brings forward three items. Actually, we have four items, because we have a walk-on item for today. But the first is a contract with Piece by Piece LLC for the 2018 Blueprint approved Institute. The second is accepting a grant from Washburn Center for Children for mental health services in the Health Department school-based clinics. The third is Minneapolis's 2016 greenhouse gas emissions inventory update and energy benchmarking annual report. And our additional item that's being walked on today, my colleagues all should have gotten a letter, I believe, about the 2020 census. And so the action is approving the submission of comments by the City of Minneapolis to the United States Department of Commerce opposing the inclusion of the question regarding citizenship on the 2020 census form. And I also want to add that I have given the direction and worked with Council President Bender to also include supporting the inclusion of an LGBTQ counting questions. So that would be the first time that LGBTQ folks have ever been counted in the census. And it was actually a decision by the Trump administration to remove that in the first place. So just wanted to add that, and so that will be item four. No, that's not how that works. Okay. Can you clarify, Mr. Clerk?
Madam President, as you announced at the beginning of the meeting, we've added a business, a new business item. This entire question of the census letter and the opposition officially taken by the city to the two issues will be taken up under new business. So not under a committee report, but we do have a staff member, Karen Mo, the deputy director from Neighborhood and Community Relations, who will, under that order of business at the end of the agenda, be ready to speak to it, and then all the council members would have an opportunity to speak.
That's great. I'm really excited about that. Thank you for that clarification. Never mind about the addition.
That's perfect. And now we have a preview. Thank you, Councilmember Cunningham, for moving the committee report. Is there any discussion on the items that Councilmember Cunningham has moved? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Connaught.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next is a report from the Public Safety Emergency Management Committee, presented by the committee chair, Councilmember Connaught.
Thank you, Madam President. Public safety has a total of five items coming before us today. Item number one is a gift acceptance from the Annie Casey Foundation for travel-related expenses to the Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative Deep End Interstate Conference. Item number two is a contract with the Minnesota Timberwolves for bomb detection at the Target Center. Item number three is a contract with Tetra Tech, Inc., to provide comprehensive emergency operations center exercise planning and development. Four is a revenue agreement with SMG to provide MPD vehicles for MPD officers to utilize during large-scale events. And item number five is a contract with the Minneapolis Public Housing Authority for Section 8 housing voucher program. And if there are any questions, I'll take any. Otherwise, I move all those items forward.
Councilmember Connaught has moved the committee's report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Connaught.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next, we have the report from our Transportation and Public Works Committee. That report today will be given by Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, President Bender. We are bringing forth 17 items from the Transportation and Public Works Committee for consideration. Item number one is an agreement with MinDOT for landscaping improvements at Highway 77 and 62. Item number two is 28th Avenue South Street Reconstruction Project, also with MinDOT. Item number three is a contract amendment for the condenser upgrade at the Hoff parking ramp. Bender to also include supporting the inclusion of an LGBTQ counting questions. So that would be the first time that LGBTQ folks have ever been counted in the census. And it was actually a decision by the Trump administration to remove that in the first place. So just wanted to add that. And so that will be item four. No, that's not how that works. Okay. Can you clarify, Mr. Clerk?
Madam President, as you announced at the beginning of the meeting, we've added a business, a new business item. This entire question of the census letter and the opposition officially taken by the city to the two issues will be taken up under new business. So not under a committee report, but we do have a staff member, Karen Mo, the Deputy Director from Neighborhood and Community Relations, who will, under that order of business at the end of the agenda, be ready to speak to it. And then all the council members would have an opportunity to speak.
That's great. I'm really excited about that. Thank you for that clarification. Never mind about the addition.
That's perfect. And now we have a preview. Thank you, Councilmember Cunningham, for moving the committee report. Is there any discussion on the items that Councilmember Cunningham has moved? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries and the report is adopted. Next, we have the report from the Ways and Means Committee, given by the Chair, Councilmember Worsami.
Thank you, Madam President. The Ways and Means Committee has five items to report to the full council, for the full council's approval. Item number one is a second-quarter donations report. Item number two, City of Minneapolis Partnership Application to the Fiscal Year 2019 National Endowment of the Arts, Our Town Program. Item number three is a contract with cultural brokers for strategic and racial equity action planning. Item number four is licensing agreement with the Minneapolis Public Schools for installation of the 26th Avenue North Public Art. And item number five is a local government amicus briefing Planned Parenthood of Wisconsin, Et al, versus Alex M. Azar, Et al. And I move all items to approval.
Councilmember Worsami has moved the committee's report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries and the report is adopted. Sorry. Finally, we have the report from the Zoning and Planning Committee, from the committee chair, Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Council President. Zoning and Planning has 11 items for consideration today for the full council. Number one is the approval of the granting an appeal for stormwater management for 3200 Lake Street West. The second is the denial of an appeal for 1717 Central Avenue Northeast. Second is the denial of appeal for 3326, 3338, 3350 University Avenue Southeast. Number four is a denial of an appeal at the same property. The fifth, number five, is the approving of a rezoning at the same property. Number six is a staff direction for the same property to look out to work with the Historic Preservation Commission. Number seven is a sign regulation ordinance. Number eight is signage on a primary building wall ordinance that will be returned to author. Number nine is the real estate sign ordinance that is also going to be returned to an author. Number 10 is the returning of an author, an ordinance for commercial murals. And number 11 is the approval of a rezoning at 136 Cedar Lake Road North. I'd like to bring forward items 1, 2, 6, 8, 9, 10, and 11 for approval. And the rest, I understand, there's some interest in my colleagues on having a dialogue.
Councilmember Schrader has moved those items he listed. So we'll see if there's any discussion on those items from the Zoning and Planning Committee report. Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
Those items carry and are adopted. So I'll recognize Councilmember Schrader for the remaining item.
Well, I'll defer to Councilmember Gordon.
Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much. I actually have a motion to amend number seven, and then I would like to move to postpone three, four, and five. So why don't I move the postponement first? Three, four, and five all have to do with a project that is in the second ward. So maybe I can just speak to that a little bit. I was the one who actually moved to deny the appeal and to move the rezoning. And I haven't changed my mind on those opinions. But given the length of the meeting and the time that was provided, and also some other information I found in the traffic management plan and some other things, and the fact that the developer was out of town and just recently got back from Alaska, I would think I'd like the opportunity to consider some conditions and work with staff on some possible added conditions. I'll just tee it up. It has to do with some of the very nearby properties and the impacts of this. It doesn't necessarily have to do with wider issues of the project. But I think there's an opportunity to clarify some of the conditions, and I'd like a couple weeks to work on that.
Councilmember Gordon has moved to postpone items two, three, and four.
Three, four, and five.
Three, four, and five. Perfect. Is there any discussion on that postponement? Mr. Clerk?
And Madam President, to clarify, we're postponing that, I'm assuming, until the next regular meeting of the city council, which would be on August 17th or later?
Correct.
August 17th. Okay.
And, Mr. Clerk, and Councilmember Gordon, is the intention to send it back through the Zoning and Planning Committee or simply to bring it back to the council?
Just to postpone it on the council's agenda for one full, regular cycle.
Wonderful. All right. So, Councilmember, a motion to postpone to the next regular council meeting. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries and the motion is, those items are postponed. That brings us back to the final item. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much. This is an amendment to item seven. That is the, um, the sign regulation ordinance. You should have this in front of you. It's a minor amendment. I refer to it at committee, the whole. Councilmember Reich and I also, I think, refer to this at the committee. This is just to clarify the definition of a temporary sign and indicating that temporary signs in residents and OR1 districts shall be freestanding. I'm happy to take any questions on that. This is a...
Councilmember Gordon has moved an amended motion for item number seven. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries and the item is adopted. That completes our committee reports. That brings us to the notice of ordinance introductions. The next order of business is the notice for ordinance introductions. We have four notices to give today. First is notice from Councilmember Johnson of his intent to introduce at the next council meeting the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code related to amended regulations for wine and beer license class definitions and allowable entertainment. Second, notice from Councilmember Johnson of his intent to introduce at the next council meeting the subject matter of an ordinance amending the zoning code related to multiple chapters that contain regulations for general and limited entertainment purposes. Third, notice from Councilmember Worsami of his intent to introduce at the next council meeting the subject matter of an ordinance amending the zoning code related to regulations for existing off-premise advertising signs and billboards near regional sports facilities. And fourth, notice from Councilmember Schrader of his intent to introduce at the next council meeting the subject matter of an ordinance amending the housing code related to tenant protections related to calls for emergency services associated with domestic violence and other emergencies. Are there any questions from council on any of those four notices? Seeing none, the notices are given and no further action is required. The next order of business is the introduction and referral calendar. Pursuant to notice given at the last meeting, Councilmember Schrader moves to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance for first reading and referral to amend the zoning code related to the regulation of rooftop mechanical equipment, penthouses, and building height, and refer that to the Zoning and Planning Committee for review and recommendation. Also pursuant to notice, we have a motion from Councilmember Johnson to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance for first reading and referral to amend the zoning code related to regulations for lots containing two or more zoning classifications, and refer that to the Zoning and Planning Committee for review and recommendation. Are there any councilmember, any questions from council members on those notices or any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That carries. Those ordinances are referred to the Zoning and Planning Committee in the next cycle for review and recommendation. The next order of business is resolutions, and we have two this morning. First is an honorary resolution declaring August 5th through 11th as Farmer's Market Week. And second is the honorary resolution welcoming the American Council for Polish Culture Convention to the City of Minneapolis for its 2018 conference. Is there a motion to approve those resolutions?
So move.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That carries, and both of those honorary resolutions are adopted. And the next item is item under new business. As we noted earlier, you should have at your desks copies of a letter from the mayor and myself to express the official position of the City of Minneapolis in opposition to the inclusion of a question about citizenship as part of the 2020 census. And as Councilmember Cunningham indicated earlier, he has some, uh, a change to propose as well. So we'll ask Deputy Director Karen Mo from the Neighborhood and Community Relations Department to explain the purpose of the action and respond to any questions. And I'll just note that the letter is attached to a letterhead, so it's the one that looks like a request for committee action. Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, council. President council members. I am Karen Mo, Deputy Director of Neighborhood and Community Relations. We were here just a couple weeks ago presenting an overview of state, federal, and local efforts leading up to the 2020 census. During that presentation, we mentioned that earlier this year, the federal government decided to include a question regarding individual citizenship status on the 2020 census questionnaire. They're currently accepting public comments regarding this decision until August 7th. There is quite a bit of concern, both at the local level and also at the national level regarding the inclusion of this question and the fact that it feels like it's going to deter any efforts to get a complete and accurate count. With that, you have before you a letter stating our city's opposition to the inclusion of that question on the 2020 census. With that, I'll take questions.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Gordon.
I don't have any questions. I just want to thank the council president and the mayor for giving us the opportunity to weigh on this as a full body and a full council and take this kind of action. I think it's significant. The two of you could have written a letter on your own as well, but I think this is going to give it the full force and power of the full council. Now this will be city policy. It won't just be something that the leadership went forward with. And I think absolutely it's something we should be fighting against.
Thank you. Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. So as I had mentioned earlier, something that I had talked with Karen about, as well as Council President Bender, is about the actual inclusion as well of an LGBT-focused question on the census. The Obama administration had recommended that, if I'm not mistaken, that that be included. And then it was a big announcement from the Trump administration that they were actively not going to include that question. And the reason why that question matters and really, you know, I would really like to see that included is because we don't have an accurate count of our, the LGBTQ community, which also translates to resources and just being able to understand what the needs are, where they are. So, and that, and I feel like that's particularly true for trans folks. There's just been such little research that's been done on our community at large on a national scale. There's been too large nationwide scale, nationwide studies, but otherwise, that's all we have. And so I would like to ask of Madam President and the mayor, as well as staff, to please take that into consideration. The citizen question, citizenship question is absolutely unacceptable, and I'm grateful that the City of Minneapolis leadership is saying that's unacceptable. We don't want that here. That's not welcome here.
So perhaps, are there any other questions for staff on the census letter? I don't see any. Thank you so much, and thank you for your work on this.
Thank you very much.
So then I will move this item, so it would be approval to authorize submission of the letter. And then I will also move along with it that staff direction that I described to NCR to please work with myself in the mayor's office and Councilmember Cunningham to add a section requesting or emphasizing the City of Minneapolis's support for adding a question about the LGBTQ community in the census questions. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, is there a motion for approval? All in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries, and the letter has been approved, and the staff direction will go to NCR, and then we will send this in on behalf of the city. That completes all of our business items on the printed agenda. Before we adjourn, are there any announcements from council members? Councilmember Palmasano.